It's 6:30 PM on Tuesday, July 26. So I will call meeting 1831 of the East Quins are planning in zoning commission to order. Most of us are here in town hall, but we do have a few people joining us through Zoom. So it is a virtual and in-person meeting. We have a forum with five members present. Everybody at the table will be voting tonight on everything that comes before us. And Jim Erz is absent. Or added agenda items. We have. I have two additional applications we proceed. That we will acknowledge under receipt of applications. They are PZ 2022-19 and PZ 2022-18. So when we get to receipt of applications, I'll add them onto the record. For legal notices, we have already read onto the record. The PZ 2022-12, the applicant Jerome Swanson for 148 North Road, Unit Number Four. So I don't need to read that into the record again as we open that public hearing. But we also have a legal notice for applications, PZ 2022 and PZ 2022-16, which I will read into the record. These Quins are planning in zoning commission. We'll hold a public, we'll hold the following public hearings on Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. PZ 2022-14, the applicant is Lucy Foster, who is requesting a text amendment for a new section 40, 407.2 Tiny Houses on Wheels. And PZ 2022-16, the applicant is Travis Needle Needlinger of 137 Scantic Road, who is requesting a re-subdivision approval for three residential lots, map 44, block 33, lot one, zone is R3. A full copy of these applications are available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage on the town website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding these applications. This notice was published in the Journal Inquirer on July 18 and July 21, 2022. We have a public participation item on our agenda. Is there anybody in the meeting room who would like to suggest something that needs to be discussed but is not listed on our agenda? Anybody who is with us via Zoom who would like to discuss something that is not on the agenda?
Hi, Anne. It's Noreen Farmer, 247 South Water Street.
Hi, Noreen.
How are you? Um, I actually want to talk about the tiny house on wheels, but I'll wait till the public, till your hearing. Um, but I also was just curious as to, um, if there's any progress or intended progress on the whole study that was done over here in Warehouse Point with the Blue Ditch and Terry Han and all of that. You know, it, it went for quite a while and I haven't heard anything about it since then. That was it.
Okay. Thanks, Noreen. Can I turn to the town staff for an update?
Yeah, we are drafting four base regulations to kick off the implementation of the plan, the Warehouse Point study and the plan. Mike Damato, their planning consultant, has been working on that draft. And I think we're aiming for next, next meeting to have a discussion to share that.
Does that help, Noreen?
Yes, thank you. That's great. I don't know, something must have possessed me to come on tonight about that.
Thank you.
I talked to Terry Han a few days ago about something else. Maybe that's what did it.
Anything else? Okay, anybody else who's online who has something that they feel should be raised? Okay, hearing done, we'll close public participation and move to the approval of minutes from our prior meeting, June 28. People should recognize that we were doing some motions on the fly. Yes. From our last meeting, which was July 12. We did some motions on the fly to address things that came up in the discussion and keep people able to continue forward. So our, a couple of our motions, there were, I'll call them minor technical corrections that we did not catch in the process, things like block numbers that were wrong, a lot number that was wrong. So there's no content changes. These are just technical corrections. So I would suggest when we approve the minutes, assuming they're acceptable to you all, that we correct our, I'll say, technical errors because we were on the fly. Does anyone have anything else they feel like needs to be edited in our minutes?
We should read these corrections into the record.
Yes. I'll let you know that on page 11, line 428, there is a typo. It says PZ 2022-10. We corrected it verbally in discussion, but the record should show it's PZ 2022-09. And on line 614, there is an indication that the parcel was block 16. It's lot 16. It should have been block 57. In line 627, it should have been block 57, lot 016. And that's the typos that I suggest we get corrected in the approval process. So someday in the future, when somebody goes back to the minutes, they can actually tag it correctly. There's no substantive change. It's just technical corrections to number in the lots. Any other discussion on the minutes before we proceed with approval? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to approve minutes with those technical corrections?
I'll make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes of regular meeting, 1830, held on July 12, 2022, accepting the corrections that we laid out.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Okay. Frank is abstaining. Under receipt of applications, we have received application PZ 2022-17 for 148 North Road, a special use permit for a drug testing laboratory. The applicant is Stephen Henry. We've also received a application, PZ, an amendment to application PZ 2022-16 for a re-subdivision to include a special use permit for rear lot at 137 Scantic Road. The applicant owner is Travis Needlinger.
Good. I just interject that we're going to track the special use permit as PZ 2022-18.
Oh.
Carrying them in the same jacket, but we want to make sure we track them separately.
Okay. And the other application we have received is PZ 2022-19 for 297 North Road. It's a special use permit renewal for a soil management facility. The owner applicant is the Kement Family Limited Partnership and Estate of Isabella G. Kement. So we are acknowledging receipt of those applications at this time.
That coming late because it's not on our paper yet?
Correct.
Yes. Under performance bonds, actions, permit extensions, and road acceptance. There are none? Okay. Continued public hearings, there are none. So we will begin public hearing, PZ 2022-12 for 148 North Road, Unit Four. It's a special use permit for a tattoo salon. The applicant is Jerome Swanson. It's Jerome here tonight.
Here.
Hi, welcome.
How are you?
Could you tell us about your application, please?
I'm opening a tattoo studio. It'll be a private studio. Women only. No piercings, just me. My chef. Doctor signed on.
Okay, are there any questions from commission members?
Well, planning any exterior modifications for the location at all? Just signage?
That's it. It's right in the middle section of the strip mall.
He's made it through the Department of Health.
Yeah, so one, one thing that Wes had reached out to me on today from the Health Department is just having to register with them before you start work.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I got, I got an email from the Health Department saying I was good job.
There's an annual registration.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw the letter that you submitted. So he just kind of flagged it and you'd have to have that before you get over.
Yeah.
Seems to fit with other uses in the plaza.
Yeah, there's another tattoo parlor that I spoke with them.
There's a hair salon, there's other similar partnerships. Other questions from commission members? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on this application in the room? Is there anybody joining us via Zoom who would like to comment on this application? Okay. See if he wants to comment on this. Anybody else who wants to comment on this application? It's the 148 North Road, Unit Four, last call in the room. Last call via Zoom. Okay, no further questions from the commission? So I think a motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
I'll make a motion. We close the public hearing on PZ 2022-12 for 148 North Road, Unit Four, a special use permit for a tattoo salon. The applicant is Jerome Swanson.
We have, remember I had them from? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed, so no further comment or conversation with the public or the applicant. If people are, the commission are ready, we could proceed. We have a draft motion for consideration from town staff.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ 2022-12 for a special use permit application, open a tattoo studio in 148 North Road, Unit Three, map 124, block 24, lot 11A, zone B3. The approval is granted subject to conformance with the submitted application, supporting materials and public hearing presentations that may be modified by the commission and this approval and the following conditions and modifications. Your findings one through three and condition one from a memo from Ruth Calabrese, Director of Planning and Development, dated July 6, 2022.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dave?
You said, you said unit three on that, unit four.
There's listed as unit three in the motion here. Okay. I amend my motion to state it as unit four.
Thank you for that. Um, any discussion on the motion? You want to amend your second?
Or reaffirm? I'll reaffirm my second, please, for unit four.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a public hearing on PZ 2022-14. It's a text amendment for tiny homes. The applicant is Lucy Foster. Would you like to come and present your application?
Yeah, so I would share the screen. I don't have anything to show. Okay. Yeah, you have enough then. So we're looking to legalize tiny house on wheels. Our particular situation is that my grandparents, they're in their 80s, they need some help. We're looking to do like a reverse granny flat and be able to park this tiny house on wheels on its properties that we can be accessible to them to help them out. A tiny house on wheels is a tiny house on a trailer with wheels. It's different than an RV and camper in its materiality. It's built for permanent residence. It's got all the amenities, kitchen, bathroom, sleeping. And it can be off-grid in its utilities or it can be hooked up to utilities. It's, it really depends on what the regulations will require. And we've already discussed or talked with the Waste and Sanitation and the Codes Department to get their feedback. And they have no concern about making, you know, composting or incinerator toilet. But there, we could also potentially hook up to septic or we would have to drill a new septic on my grandparents property. Our particular situation, because there is no access to sewer. And then for water, we can hook up to the water that was brought to Griffin Road. My grandparents are at 95 millimeter. And then in regards to codes, there's already codes in place that have not yet been adopted in Connecticut. Appendix Q is specific to tiny house on wheels. This has been adopted in the state of Maine and its particular codes for a tiny house on wheels in regards to fire and safety and square footage amongst other criteria. And the Codes Department basically said that they have no concern so long as, you know, we have conversations with them and our builder and show permitted drawings and schematics to make sure that this is built to an acceptable standard. And that's where we're at. Are there any questions from commission members?
I have a question for staff. We had a presentation on tiny houses, not too long, less than a year ago.
Yeah.
Okay, and I thought there was also something that was going through the state, but just like you're also on tiny houses.
Yeah, I think there's supposed to adopt opinions too in the fall. It's not yet adopted.
Gotcha. So my, my question really relies on wheels or no wheels. Is there any real differentiation on state statutes for what they're proposing?
So we, we, it was more than a year ago, we made the changes to the regs for ADUs. But this was done separately to basically make sure there was a distinction between mobile homes and RVs and tiny houses. So this is being suggested to create a separate section within where the ADU regs live.
Well, that's why I was kind of wondering, are we going to end up with three different classifications between an ADU, a tiny home and a tiny home on wheels? They're going to be three separate classifications or we're going to have one set of regs that govern all three?
Alternative.
But what's proposed in front of us kind of doesn't?
Is the section piece. There's no, it's a, it's either an ADU or a tiny house on wheels. There's no, tiny home is not.
It cannot, you cannot have one on a cinder block foundation or anything like that.
Well, you can have, our regs, the way that they were changed, would allow for a detached ADU. That would be a, basically a small single family home. I think maybe.
Meeting this square footage criteria or it's a lot larger?
Which square footage?
This is 50 or 400?
No. So this would specifically apply to the tiny house on wheels, just what, when you think of the term, on a chassis. We removed the criteria for minimum house size when we have to give you guys, because the statutes, you have to. But there's still only sort of two categories. It's an accessory dwelling or a tiny house on wheels.
And can I just clarify one thing? The reason why we're not going with the direction of building this accessory dwelling, you know, a foundation is that should something happen to my grandparents, we're not guaranteed that investment in the property. So we would be able to then pitch it up and take it to our next location wherever. So it provides us the flexibility down the road. We wouldn't be relocating it anytime soon. We'd be relocating it anywhere onto any other property.
So I would just add that the new building code, our building official, I spoke with him today, his primary concern would be the anchoring of the structure. Would have to be code, but that was his biggest concern.
And we spoke with him about that particular situation and we already discussed with our builder and our builders fully prepared. They already do that. They build homes in New England, all of the map of the East Coast. So they're familiar with the weather and, and build these homes to New England weather and high winds. And they have a particular application for securing the home with a foundation.
And also the foundation, and it weighs about like 25 pounds.
Yeah. Yeah, the builder said that we should be more concerned about a tree falling on the house and the house taking over. But we're, we, we still have the option to, to secure it. For the building folks or for the building departments.
My concern, first of all, I think it's a great, a great thing. I really do. Get more diverse, keep families together. But my concern is you put this house on wheels in your backyard and God forbid you lose your parents in a month. Now, I'm sure you'll do, you'll do the appropriate thing with your. What happens if it's not moving, people start to rent it? How do we enforce that?
I believe that we wrote within the text amendment that it would not be able to be rented. It would be for a family member only. And if my grandparents did pass away, we would most likely relocate. And it would be, there would be, you know, all of the amenities, the utilities available, the foundational area would be there. So if someone were to purchase, say, my grandparents' house, they could then have a family member park a tiny house on that same location and everything would be in place. But, yeah.
I, I, I'm more concerned about the enforcement. You know, it seems to me if, if your parents are living there and then, and there was some stipulation that maybe they had to come in and justify that they're still living there or the town had to go and justify.
Yeah. Well, we could do that and, and actually.
But we don't have that regulation. I'm kind of committing this to the, to the commission.
When my grandparents bought the property, there was actually an RV parked on a concrete pad next to their house and it was there for years and it was not regulated. And we are fully willing to have that conversation and, you know, confirm with whatever parties that we are family and we are.
Don't associate me. I'm not.
No, no.
It should be general about.
Yeah, it's a regulation. So it would enable anybody to do this.
This is not going to be specific to you. This has.
Yeah.
It seems to me that in my years here, we've had some problems with that. And I, I can remember correctly, which is hard for me to do anymore. It used to be if, if the family member left, we took out, you had to take out the stove. We had to take out certain parts of the stove that couldn't be occupied. But the problem was, if no one knew that person died, they rented it. Just kept renting and renting and years went by and they said, ah. And I'm, that's a concept that I'm concerned about.
We would have to register the tiny house as a, it gets a VIN number. And so we would have to register it anyway. So I don't know if there's part of that registration process that would say, yes, we are still living here. Yes, we are, our family is still here. I'm not sure, maybe something like that exists.
I guess I'm concerned with the, the parents or the people that are, that is, have the integrity that you have.
So I guess the question is for town staff, is there a way to add a provision where an occupant has to come in periodically to certify?
Or if they can't get out, maybe the staff, somebody in the staff goes, they say on July 1st, you go down and say, if Mr. and Mrs. Smith is still living here, verify that they are. If they are, then we have a problem. What do you do? Get it out or you can't rent it or?
I missed, where does it say that this is an accessory dwelling? That there has to be a primary dwelling? Or does it not have to be a primary? Because if somebody has an empty piece of land, can they park it on there? I don't see anything that states that it has to be an accessory. Because at that point, then we could stipulate saying that it's only permissible as long as the primary dwelling is occupied. So if the primary dwelling is no longer occupied, you don't have a lot of accessory dwellings. But nowhere in here do I see it saying that it's an accessory dwelling. So under this.
Does it make it an accessory? Because it's, I think our amendment is 407.2 or something. And I think 407.1 is the accessory dwelling. So I don't know if it's just like us, I don't know how it's organized, like sub category. I hope that changed.
So.
And so. So that this is right. So four oh seven is accessory apartments, which was, and it requires. A special permit which comes here. In any district where residential uses are permitted, may allow for the construction of one accessory apartment associated with a single family dwelling. Provided that the following criteria met, and four oh seven, four oh seven point one is the ADUs. This becomes four oh seven point two. So it's a subsection of four oh seven.
What in four oh seven doesn't state primary residence has to be occupied?
It says, it's, it's allowed in association with a single family dwell.
So the dwelling is there, but it doesn't say it's occupied.
Well, yeah, I don't know how you regulate whether it's occupied or not. Because someone's there for a day, they're gone for a year, is it occupied? Is it not? It's still got to be on a property with a single family home. I don't know that you can force someone to be living there, but you can definitely deny someone. The right to locate a tiny house on a property that doesn't have a house. The other thing.
What, what's to say if a home gets dilapidated to the point where it's basically uninhabitable? So I'm not going to fix the house. I'm just going to put a tiny one next to it.
I suppose if in another couple of weeks, the, the board of selectmen adopts the property maintenance code, that becomes easier to solve. But no different than if it was an accessory dwelling with the regs as they stand now. Can't sort of force someone to maintain the home for saving the building. To get to Frank's point, that some towns for certain things, and you used to see this with accessory apartments before the state changed. That they require a residency affidavit, which is essentially on there every two years. You have to come in and file an affidavit with the planning office that says, I still. It still creates an enforcement challenge if they choose not to, but it puts the burden on them as part of the approval. To come in and do that. You know.
I'm thinking of getting a tax bill over here.
Depending on where it's registered. So if I, depending on where it's registered. So if I pull it in from, if, if you register in Vermont and bring it here, then you're paying taxes.
But if it's there, we're going to check the grant list.
But it won't matter. It's registered.
Well, it is.
No, it has, it's not on the list.
Basically registering as a trailer.
Yeah. We would not register it in this state of Connecticut.
Are we requiring that the registration be kept current? Because, I mean, you know, you can register a modular home or a mobile home. Once it's parked on a lot, the registration is not kept current. It's no longer registered.
I, I'm wondering. Wondering if there's a way that we could basically. Require that the occupant be a cosigner on the application. So essentially, we're giving the permit to the occupant. We know that, you know, John Smith is, is requested a permit from his commission. And then John Smith can demonstrate ownership as the vehicle stays there. It's rather than the property owner who, then the occupant of the tiny house could change.
Then John Smith would be responsible for the taxes and property taxes. Right.
Let's get family. What does it matter?
Well, it doesn't stipulate that it has to be a relative.
Right, yeah, I know. The conditional approval, it's says, so the conditional approval requirements says that it can't be rented. It must be registered on the property which is located, must remain immediately capable of being removed.
So that maintains. You mean that you have to maintain that registration and be registration?
Right. And just to kind of back up, I, I, I worked with the applicant on, on this sort of workshopping. And a lot of the criteria were added specifically to create a distinction between this and a mobile home. So we looked at the requirements for insulation values of your traditional mobile home and added something that was, that. That the industry could confirm they could actually build to, but was in excess of what?
Higher force, normal rating.
Correct. So we're requiring it to be built with materials that are traditionally used to construct, construct a single family home. We're including fire codes, the, the ANSI standards and some of these other things specifically for that. Appendix Q is a subsection of the building code, which is to be adopted, which specifically addresses tiny houses. They haven't done it yet. They'd say they're going to. So, you know, all of these criteria are to create that distinction so that someone could not. Could not locate. I think we also mentioned.
Is this contingent then on the state adopting the rig?
No, because we've used, we've referenced the minimum standards of the ANSI code or NFPA.
When I'm referencing back to the.
Right. Or, or Appendix Q as an amendment, so that if Appendix Q does get adopted, it can apply. And then we, that included insulation values includes a P roof, because I don't know if a mobile home has anything other than a flat.
It's a flat once they go under the bridge.
Yeah.
Um, what about site plan setbacks, all that? It's in our reg.
Yep. And, and do we limit this space between it and the houses or a regulation for that? I mean. We don't, uh, I don't know if the fire code was.
Right.
Or the fire marshal, he might, might have some.
It does say in here it has to be detached. So you can't have, you can't have passage in between two.
Right. Would, would you consider a deck attachment? They had a deck that led to a side door to the house. Would that be considered attachment? That's so, yeah, that's, I mean, that's something that we kind of deal with, with some of the other stuff as well. If somebody, you know, has a detached structure that gets reduced setback. And it's a free floating deck built up against the back of the house. It's not attached, so it gets accessory. So people are already playing on that, but we have a regulation that says it must remain immediately capable of being removed from the property. So, so if, if you've got to deconstruct all kinds of accoutrements to get the thing out of there. Then I don't think, you know, so you're not going to attach a covered porch. You're not going to attach a garage. You're not going to build things to it.
I understand. I'm just.
Can you talk about WPCA's concern?
I think.
And would the health department kick in if? If there is no sewer, would they make them increase the size of the subject system because it's based on bedrooms?
Yeah.
Well, if you're allowing incinerating toilets.
Well, what if they're, well, we're saying that's with this unit, but what about the next unit? But it would not all go through their regs anyways. They have probably no regs.
And I know Lucy had conversations with Mike Corona about all the different avenues. They would be doing the same assessment.
You have to get the health department, the septic approval, or you would have to get the WPCA approval.
So do we need to kind of just cover the pumping, the holding tank, it would not be permissible in the pumping hall? That kind of, uh, that would work.
Or they didn't say no to that, no alternative.
Did they say yes?
They wanted the state.
They, they were open to the, you know, they were, we consider it should be provided, you know.
If you look at, um, four oh seven to see approval criteria number two. It requires that the applicant demonstrate that it can be built to satisfy any and all applicable state of kind of billing codes or public health codes. The satisfaction of et cetera, or that they've been contacted. So again, because this is something that may have a change in criteria. They can't necessarily build to those standards when they come to you, but they have to build to one of the applicable codes.
So they got to satisfy.
So Mike is saying.
And then the second, the, the next one basically says, you can't tell us you're going to use the toilet in the main house.
Right.
It's got to be a fully functioning standalone.
So I'm not clear on the memo from the WPCA. They seem to have issues and I can't tell if they've been worked through or not.
They have not. These were Art Emily's initial comments. And he has put the topic on, um, the WPCA's agenda. They're having a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so we should continue this to a future meeting. So we have the benefit of. Your final thoughts, right, and decision. But because it, are there other questions from the commission before we open it to any other public member who wants to talk?
I just have one other. Do we need to address this at all location? You know, say if it's not allowed, front yard or side yard or those kinds of things.
It's currently written that it has to meet the accessory structure setbacks.
Yeah.
Which would be the same as an ADU. Which I think was probably to do in the front there.
So it's got to.
Are there questions from the commission?
So it sounds like there'll be a permanent foundation. Because you're going to need something hooked to hurricane straps that everybody thinks we need now.
Right, that was something that I heard, that one of the concerns that Art had was. The connection to the sewer would have to be three feet under.
Right.
Do that would be along with.
Or if you don't have the pitch, or if you don't, I mean, the sewer's on the other side of the house. Yeah.
So.
Then they want to eat, then they want to charge your hookups, which is about six thousand.
So they have some things to work through, as, as we define it. As a single family dwelling. And then their regs will kick in. What do they do with a single family? So they need to talk through on their side.
Exactly. They're talking like a joint or common septic system, two dwellings. Spot zoning, because now you're adding a second dwelling on the. Carrier, the zone for a single family house, now you're adding a second. You turn it into a whole family, because there's another one there.
I don't know if that is like a age run zone.
Yeah, and you're out of the sewer use. The sewer's got nothing to do, you're, you're up there.
It's stating, it's a matter of its R one, R two, R three agricultural. You stipulate what zones it's allowed in. Or they're, they're all going to be specially spotted. In every zone. Would it be allowed in a D zone? You have a few levels, if you have a small use, they have an upstairs dwelling in a.
Downstairs.
Yeah.
It says a single family dwelling. That was a way the reg was written first. Accessories to a single family dwelling. And so I think you could pretty easily make the case that if you had a, something like that, you could. You could also be expanding the non-conformity of the property because you're adding another unit. If residential wasn't allowed, let's say it was a hundred buyers.
Right.
Does it limit us to one per? Yes, so. My. My mother's house and then my sister and then, right.
And because.
Want to, maybe we could change the regs easily.
Or say it's you and your sister. And it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Exactly. Unlike the ADUs.
Yes.
So this still would be a special permit. It still have to come before it. It's not like an ADU where it has to be as a right. This is not an ADU. So the statutes don't kick in where we have to.
Well, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Some problem.
I agree, I'm sure.
I don't want my son to live the next thing, so. I just got rid of him, okay?
Okay, this is a public hearing on a proposed change to the town regulations. Is there anybody in the room who would like to comment on this? Is there anybody who's online who would like to comment on this?
Hi, Ian. It's Noreen Farmer, two forty seven Southwater Street. Um, first of all, I want to commend you for coming, for doing this. This is an awesome way for families to be able to help their older family to age at home. Um, which is a, a wonderful thing to do. So I commend the applicants for even thinking of doing this. Kudos to you. I, I just want to talk about it in general. This is something that I've actually thought about with my daughter, who, who desperately wants a tiny house on wheels. And, um, I, quite frankly, in the beginning, I thought she was absolutely insane. Um, as how, how do you do a tiny house on wheels and drive from here to there and park for six months at my house? And then go to Montana and live the winters out. Um, and then I actually purchased a tiny home in Maine. That, um, is completely off-grid, very small. It started as a tiny house on wheels, but it eventually got actually put onto a foundation. They're very, very livable. You can completely live off-grid in these homes. They, um, solar runs them perfectly. You can. I actually happen to have septic, but truthfully, when that septic goes, I would probably choose to go to a composting toilet. Because you're not generating that much waste, that it becomes so much of a issue. Um, water is doable. And I, I think there, there's a lot of new, a lot of people who are coming up through the generations. Like my kids' generation, who don't ever want to own a massive home. They, they want to have a, a little house someplace. Where they could buy a piece of land in East Windsor, and if they could put something like this on it, i- it suits their life. And I think a lot of times, because it's new and because there's all these issues with sewers and whatnot. It tends to be a little frightening, um, and hard to kind of step out of the box. But these are absolutely doable. You can live in them. I, I, I am so looking forward to moving to mine up in Maine, because it's, it's, it's kind of heaven. Um, so I get where you have, you're going with putting it on another piece of property and all of that. But I think from a broader perspective, it's not a bad idea just to let anybody who wants to buy a piece of land and have a little house. And live their happy little life in a little house. That's not a bad thing for East Windsor. But in the meantime, um, if it can be done in the means that they're wishing to do this. Again, i- it's a wonderful way for aging populations to be able to age at home. We're not going to be overrun with them. You're not going to have, you know, five hundred people flying in here to put these tiny homes in. And I think that we should do our best to make it as feasible for people to do this. For, not just for caring for their elderly family, but to just live a nice, basic lifestyle in a smaller. Means, um, and, um. These are allowed in Maine. Maine has established these regulations. And, um, I've seen them being driven, and I honestly thought originally this is absolute insanity. But they're not. They travel on down the road and they go and they, they function very, very well. So I for want am all for it, especially in this person, this situation. If we can get them this to be approved soon, so that they can get in there with their family. But in general, I think we need to look at it from the broader perspective of it's diverse housing. It allows people to have something that's not the sustained big house. Stuck with the utility, stuck with the sewer, stuck with the, all of that. I personally think it's a great idea and I hope that you allow them to do this.
Thanks, Noreen. Anybody else who's online and wants to comment on this?
Hi, my name is Nicole Polliato. Um, I was actually interested in purchasing land in East Windsor as well, uh, for a tiny home. Um, to my surprise, it wasn't allowed. Um, so I just wanted to stop by and say that I think it's a great idea. Um, I currently live in Enfields, Connecticut, which allows, uh, you know, shed to home transformations and tiny houses. But, you know, considering I would love to live in a community like East Windsor, you know, like Noreen said, a simple life. In a home that meets all of these regulations and zoning requirements you have. Except for the one of the twelve hundred plus square feet. Um, you know, these could be built to every single requirement except the square footage. And, you know, put on a piece of land connected to hookups. Um, it's essentially the same, just smaller. And so like Noreen said, you know, younger generations growing up with student loans and things like that. You know, they still want to own homes. And, you know, personally, I would love to own a piece of land, develop it, start a garden, maybe even use it. For some kind of agriculture. Um, you know, these thoughts are really coming to people's minds for developing land. So I would just like to say, I think it's a great idea, whether it's an accessory dwelling or just a single family dwelling. On a piece of land as well.
Anyone else who wants to speak to this?
Can I speak in response to what they both said? Selfishly, we were trying to approach this from our particular situation, just because, um. It's very urgent that we be closer to my grandparents. We actually just. It's very urgent that we be closer to my grandparents, we actually just sold our house in Wayne, Massachusetts, so that we could move closer. Couldn't wait any longer to build the house, we rented a renting an apartment so that we can be close by. But realistically, I believe that housing is a human right and it really should. I I feel that we should provide the option to anyone to be able to live in these types of situations. As we've explained, tiny houses are very. They're built to live in full time, they're great alternatives to houses, we struggle. You know, I mean, we were able to pay our mortgage, but we also have a tremendous amount of student loan debt and thankfully, the sale of our house allows us to pay off our debt. But that is not an option for everybody and it would just provide particularly, you know, regeneration millennials with copious amounts of student loan debt, we can't afford a mortgage. We could afford a mortgage, but it was tight, it was challenging, and the tiny house provides so much financial freedom. And allowing that for everybody, not just this particular situation where we're helping our grandparents, but. Maybe down the road, if we could then buy a piece of land and park this tiny house in East Windsor, we maybe would stay in East Windsor and continue to contribute to the community. And same thing, we would love to start a garden, we're passionate about sustainability, these tiny houses can be built sustainably, they can be off grid, we're not utilizing a ton of water. We're not utilizing a ton of electricity or we're harvesting it from the sun, there's just so many ways that it can be beneficial to. The the planet and to the community and just to the younger generation that don't have an option to purchase a house, we just, we just don't. We have so much student loan debt that we cannot afford even the down payment on our house, never mind the mortgage and the maintenance and the upkeep. And so having something that's small, we came from a nine hundred fifty square foot house, it was too big for us, we just were were we lived slowly. We spent a lot of time outside, we don't need that much space and we don't, we can't afford. That much space either, and so i- I agree that we would. You know, I like I said, selfishly, we're approaching this from our particular situation because that is very important to us, but my next step would have been to. Take it to the next level and kind of push this to go more broadly so that anybody has that option.
Thank you, any further comments in the room tonight? Any further questions from the commission?
What is your timeline? Sounds like you're ready now.
Yeah, well, we couldn't really wait any longer, so the builder is about twelve twelve months out and we've been working with them since we actually started this conversation with planning. Last August, so we've been waiting since last August and then as soon. Yeah, we've been having conversations with them so that we can bring information to you and and just make sure that everybody understands that this is not not just like a piece of metal on land and this is a properly built house. So as soon as we get the go ahead, we are ready to rock and roll with the builder and I don't remember who said it, but people aren't going to be talking these willy nilly, they're. Quite expensive, they're not as expensive as a traditional house, but they are not as inexpensive as an RV or a camper. So we are in in making a significant investment in this home and so we wanted to make sure that this text amendment gets approved and passed and then we'll initiate the builder right away.
So then you're still a year up.
Yeah, which is why we couldn't, we couldn't wait any longer, so we sold our house and moved to Berman and we're close to our grandparents so that we can be here to help them.
Well, we have to remember, this is not only for grandparents.
Right.
Or for elderly, this could be.
Right.
His son, he wants to kick him out of the house and give him a backyard.
And and I mean, as you're seeing how. We could not, we would not be able to afford the house that we just sold, we would not be able to afford it today, so we bought at a very good time and we sold at a very good time, but I really feel for. All of the people of our generation who are trying to buy houses right now and never mind starting a family and having full time jobs and just trying to live their life. It's very challenging, it's very challenging.
I think where we stand tonight is we need to work out language that works. With the needs of the WCCA. And to do that, we need to give staff till the next meeting.
I think it's trouble as to whether we want to continue to go down this path, if you're appropriate at this time, so staff could work up. Maybe not all of us are favorable.
I think we got the sense everybody was okay when from the prior discussions.
Well, it's always kind of nice to get somebody on record that we're in favor of. Something that is not. I'm in, I'm in favor.
Does anybody have any major issues that we need to get resolved?
No.
For them to be in favor. That's my sense is everybody is in favor, the question is just the how.
I hope your sense is correct.
What?
I hope your sense is correct.
I'm with Frank.
Yeah, I think everybody is.
Dave is with me.
Yeah.
Everybody.
I do see the. I want to make sure that the language is correct and tight, that there's no.
I think Jimmy's our problem, Tom. He can live out back at the time.
A process, we gotta get the language right.
Yeah, I mean, I just even though I'm kind of hung on one clarification, this last four oh seven two B, number four, when it says we must maintain separate. Facilities, cooking, sleeping, water and sewer, so that means they have to drop a separate wellhead, they can't take water from the existing home.
What if it's city water?
Well, that's what, but it says it has to be separate, so that means you have to have a separate hookup from the street, so I mean, that's why.
If you're in water, city water.
Yeah. Yeah, and we have particular access, but in the case that we, you couldn't hook up to city water, a well would have to be done, we did propose the option of harvesting rainwater, but I.
We're not blocking holding tanks, right?
It has to have a service. Two properties sharing the same well is a community water system, which is a totally different animal in the public health code.
Right.
And the regulatory review related to that, someone would probably rather drill twelve wells than go to the state for approval. So.
Curious, but when you start locating where this is going to go, proximity to the other well that.
Right.
Now are we talking excavating across the yard, I mean, this could turn into quite a major.
Yeah, I, you know, this is, this has been written not so flexibly that anybody that wants one can have it, it's just.
By this applicant.
It it's not tailored specifically for this property, but it's, there's, they're going to have to be able to demonstrate that the engineering of the property can accommodate it, is they, they need seventy five feet separating distances for wells to set them if they have hole. They're going to need to demonstrate that they can either connect or they can get a composting toilet or whatever it is, they're going to have to. But they're certainly going to be.
More on the water supply, so.
Yeah.
You're not allowing holding tanks and, you know, that kind of, and and you know, local pump set up.
Yeah.
Then you need either a well or service.
Because the.
And the insulation factor, how they're.
Right.
When it's now, when it's not on a foundation, it's on wheels that prevent from freezing.
We don't want a guard hose running across the backyard. Because the two dwelling units taking water from the same well is a different animal for them, so we, for the health code, so we wanted to create something separate. So if there's another option, rather than drilling their own well or just connecting to a water service, they'll have to pursue it outside of.
I think what this does is it works for this particular applicant, and I heard other people say they wanted to.
They want to expand it.
And they can come in with a proposal to make it.
The other comments were more running to be a standalone property on its own.
Right.
This.
Right, so they would have to come in with another proposal to do that, but I don't think we should freeze and stop this. Because this is the applicant's proposal and we should consider this and that the next person wants to add another piece of flexibility and another design factor, then they can.
My concern is weren't that isn't concerned because that's that's happening already at town.
That we're concerned, the staff has heard it and they'll think about it for our next meeting, so I would propose we continue this to the next meeting as opposed to closing.
I'll I'll make a proposal that we continue the public hearing for PZ twenty twenty two dash fourteen, the textman for tiny homes. Applicant Lucy Foster until next meeting, which will be on August ninth.
I might second by day, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're continued to the next meeting.
Good luck. Thank you.
The next public hearing, PZ twenty twenty two dash sixteen for one thirty seven Stanford Road three subdivision. The recommendation is to table till August ninth because they have revisions to get through because it turned out to be a rear lock, correct? Does someone want to make a motion to table that public hearing till August ninth?
I'll make a motion that we table the discussion of PZ twenty twenty two there sixteen, one thirty seven Stanford Road three subdivision until our next meeting, which is August ninth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by day, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That team now. You have on your old business. The PZ twenty twenty two dash eight, twenty Thompson Road, it's a site plan modification for Koma Precision.
Hello, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Daniel Jamison of Design Professionals, a project manager and a project engineer for Koma Precision. Yeah, printer malfunction.
Want to make sure that.
Yep, Daniel Jamison of Design Professionals, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. And we had a printer malfunction today, of course, so I wasn't able to print off our exhibits, but we made eleven by seventeens to pass out to the commission, that's acceptable. And I also have a flash for a meeting that we can share the exhibits as well if that's.
So there is a folder on there that says.
Thank you so much. All right, well, once again, for the record, Dan Jamison, project manager at Design Professionals and Professional Engineer in the state of Connecticut. Here on behalf of the applicant, William Mayo of Koma Precision Inc., the owner of the owner and operator of the existing of twenty four hundred, twenty four thousand, I'm sorry, square foot building. Located at twenty Thompson Road, just to locate the property, the property is located east of South Main Street. And is abutted by ALD Vacuum Technologies along its southwestern property boundary, the state of Connecticut owned property to the rear behind the property. And then. And to the north is the East Windsor Industrial Park at twenty two Thompson Road. The proposed site plan modification includes the construction of a new ten thousand square foot building addition of gravel storage area. And twenty six additional parking areas and supporting pavement area and also stormwater management improvements. The building addition will include approximately six hundred twenty five square feet of office and bathroom area. The remaining nine thousand three hundred and seventy five square feet will be proposed, is proposed to be warehouse for storage. For stormwater management improvement to accommodate the addition, we are proposing an underground detention system to detain increased peak flows from the expanded impervious areas. The underground detention system will connect to the existing subsurface drainage system where detained stormwater will combine with runoff from the existing impervious surfaces. And be conveyed to the storm drainage system in Thompson Road as it does today. The underground detention system was sized to ensure that peak rates entering Thompson Road system are equal to or less than existing rates for the two, ten, twenty five, fifty and one hundred year storm events. The underground detention system will also provide treatment of detained. Of the determined water quality flow rate within proposed isolation road or an isolation road. For proposed pavement areas as recommended in the two thousand and four stormwater quality man. For erosion and sedimentation control, soap fencing, catch basin inlet protection, access tracking pads, so stockpile areas and so stockpile areas. Are proposed to prevent spread of sediments offsite. All ENS controls were selected and designed based on the two thousand and two Connecticut guidelines for erosion and sedimentation control. We did receive town engineer comments and have submitted revised plans addressing those comments. Is our opinion that we did satisfy those comments, but we will continue to work with town staff. And Mr. Mr. Norton and other town staff to continue to address any additional comments if there are any, we haven't received any suggested revised plans. As needed, so with that, it was our opinion also that the plans presented conform to the dimensional zoning requirements. And will not pull and will pose negligible impacts to the surrounding hydrology of the area. That's it for my presentation, thank you guys for your time and we're welcome to answer any questions.
Questions?
One question, exterior gravel storage here.
Yes, sir.
What's the.
Um, well, I would imagine it is. They make precision parts, so probably there after they, I don't know, delivery materials and stuff like that. They wouldn't have any like chemicals or or if they do, it would be stored properly and protected so that. Yeah, runoff would be protected, yeah, they would, they would have to adhere to container requirements, so. It is just for their.
The building addition is intended as as a storage.
As well.
Additional space needed for storage that. We don't.
Yeah.
Adding building not enough for what we still leave.
Yeah.
Still need outside storage.
They still want us of outside storage as well, so, yeah, more, you know, sensitive materials will go inside and then the stuff that could be protected by just, they're okay protected with the chain link.
Do they have any outside storage now?
No, they do not have existing outside storage, so this will.
So these containers aren't there? The ones that are shown?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there are some.
It looks like they're moving them to the back.
No. So they are removing those trailers, those are going bye bye, and those are actually cornhole ports for their employees.
Okay. So you said the drainage connected to Thompson Road, but it doesn't, does not appear that there's a pipe from your. You, your infiltrator system to that. Yeah, absolutely, come on up.
So this is our whole control structure there and then this is a new HDP pipe that are connected to this existing catch base.
But so none of this is tied into the.
Yes, so this is all one big underground chamber system is a plastic.
No, no, I understand what that is, but there's no pipe connecting it.
So it's all connected hydraulically through that.
So this is all going to be stone.
That's all stone and the plastic galleys.
And only one set of row galleys, that's all it's required. So this is all stone underground and then with cloth, I get it.
Exactly, so yeah, the cloth wraps around the first accepting.
I got to the detail sheet.
Ah, now I get in trouble on that all the time.
Well, you know. I am being recorded, so I will honestly say that. I tell Lenny all the time, plans are a reference.
That is.
I like these. We did these across the street. Yeah. Right, and there's a lot of clay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there questions from the.
Someone should ask why didn't see James that.
Well, I saw the. Looks like they're just putting some. Full cut off wall packs on there, the photometric plan looks like there's another. Infiltration outside the property lines. Move cornhole for your employees, right?
I sure don't, I think.
I sure don't. So.
Existing building is brick construction.
It is a brick building.
This one is going to be metal. Finishes to match.
It looks like steel.
Corrugated, yeah.
Yeah, still um. It'll be painted in a similar, matching color so that it blends together nicely, yes.
Is the existing flat roof and this is gonna have a pitch through it?
Yes, this will have a pitch and the existing is flat, yeah.
Elevation, you're gonna have any.
We are proposing roof leaders to collect the gutters for the proposed addition and they will be directed directly into the underground infiltration system or underground detention system, no infiltration was accounted for. Um, for detention.
Yeah, it doesn't look like too much of a pitch, I'm thinking as far as like uh, bright sheeting or anything like that, you have pedestrian doors on the, on the downside of the. Picture the roof. Do you think you need to add any kind of icebreakers or anything to the roof there, so you don't have.
Well, the gutters, you don't, it's not intended to waterfall, but what recommendations?
I, I mean, I have a metal building and ice comes off and comes off in a hole.
Okay.
When it warms up inside, you'll come off in one time.
Yeah, I can talk with the architect on that and see.
Yeah, I don't have any cleats on mine, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I could talk to the architect on that and we can add a additional ice sheet.
Because we have pedestrian boards right underneath that.
Okay, I don't think that'll be a problem.
I mean, that's more going to be for the building from it, I just, I just a recommendation to them to look at. We're not approving the design of the building, we're just approving that they can add. That pitch. If you look at the elevation. Yeah, if you look at the east elevation, there is a pitch to the roof.
Yeah, one and a half to twelve, nothing.
So it's pitching north and south, right? So you have doors on both the north and south.
Twelve to one and a half.
Oh, yeah, so it's, it's a workable roof, if you're working with it.
Yeah.
Just the recommendation to you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, you are satisfied with what's presented, we have a memo from Bruton dated July. General comments and it has a motion for consideration.
Make a motion to approve application P Z twenty twenty two dash zero eight for second plan modification, twenty Thompson Road coma precision. This approval is granted subject to the performance with the reference plans that may be modified by the commission and this approval, following conditions, modifications. Are, item one and two on the reference plans, items one through four on the conditions must be met prior to signing the final. Plan set and conditions five through ten that must be met prior to the issuance of a permit. And general conditions eleven through fifteen, all stated in a memo from Muffin Calabrese, Director of Planning and Development, dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, members of the commission, appreciate your time.
Looks like no new business, no other business, we have some. Correspondence from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Sporting Agencies, it's just a quarterly newsletter. Reading and um. Under business meeting, we have a discussion on trucking terminals. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, take the brain a little bit. We have, we have people come in looking to establish trucking terminals and our regulations don't pull that out. And I have been aligning that with warehousing distribution M one and just wanted to get a sense of. Your thoughts on that, that makes sense to you, do you say yes, trucking terminal, because we're housing distribution? In the M one zone.
We currently have two grain power.
And I, you know. But they find a trucking terminal, when I think of what I see on Newbury Road, it's up on the tractor trailer.
Freight or it's.
High traffic thing, it's just.
It's a place to park and maybe transfer like.
The long haul and short haul.
Okay.
Those are, those are flatback transfers that are there right now.
Is it deserving of its own definition or? To align.
Backing the truck in, moving the stuff to another truck or transferring, so. And kind of, don't consider it warehouse because nothing stays there. Comes in, goes out, it's not intended to. By, by, by plan, it, it keeps, comes in, cross docks out and leaves out again, the building stays empty. Kind of during, during non-operating hours. That's kind of the, the nature of that's.
Do you see it as a less intensive use?
Um. Really? Having, having worked in the industry, I, the only issue that I see a lot happens is it's predominantly a night activity. And we get a lot of complaints from neighbors, yes, because backup alarms or just banging in the night makes, you know, coupling and uncoupling the trailers makes a lot more noise. Uh, or it's more noticeable in the dead of night, so I just. You have to just be weary of proximity to residents.
Would that make it more um.
More warehouse.
Would be better as a specialty firm than an.
I think so. And want to end somewhere and it.
True.
And it begins something else at the Shoah Road.
And Apothecary's Hall Road.
Yeah, what you do very, backs up to. Yeah, big housing development. Yeah. On the backside of it, you've got Prospect Hill. Yeah, that whole neighborhood, the water towers. And there, there, you know. All American Waste has done a great job at deafening, but they started two morning, two, three o'clock in the morning.
Though we also heard him saying he started buying health cars.
Well, they also, right, they also moved all the trucks.
Yeah.
They also moved all the trucks to the front, they used to park them right up along the property by the back.
But that's why we're kind of leaning toward it should be a special use permit, so we can have a look.
I agree.
Look at their layout and say, okay.
There's an existing one there that's a van, six acres of land. What a beautiful place it is. But. It's a.
When uh, when did the regs change that allow those to be their originals on them? And then why do they change more?
Well, whether they were ever specifically allowed or not, or just.
It was interpreted in a different way.
Love change, just as applications, people are coming in asking.
Yeah.
I think of some of them, when we, when we had that start building. We were able to have the conversation about the emissions too, and he was totally in tune with how to address that, so I think having, being able to have them come in and have the discussion, so.
We've got zero. That's about several other than sidewalks. Right, as far as noise, especially in the rain, you know, she was.
Yeah.
The building's a buffer.
To the roof.
Yeah, makes sense. And we start over there too.
Nothing on executive session.
I'll make a motion with your.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All the gerb.
I, I.
Were adjourned at. Seven fifty three.